Our prayer and pledge this evening are from Madeline Scales-Harris. Ms. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. May we bow our heads? Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you just as humble as we know how to say thank you for blessing us to see this a day that wasn't promised to us. And Lord, as we enter into another year that you have blessed us to see thus far, we pray for those that have had disasters, illness, and death in their family. We ask that your healing power be with these people. And we ask that those that are fighting on foreign soil tonight, we ask you to be with the families and be with them. And Lord, as we partake in getting ready to handle the business of the city, we ask that you move within the midst of us, that we may handle the business that is pleasing in your sight. This is my prayer. We ask in your darling son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to Murfreesboro City Council, January the 9th, 2014. A couple of announcements today is Isabella Gillies' birthday. So you'll see that Isabella Gillies' daddy is not here tonight. So we wish her a happy birthday and hope they have a great little birthday party tonight. We also have a large group from Leadership Rutherford. We're going to try to extend the meeting tonight to three, three-and-a-half hours.[136.16][136.16](Laughter) Just kidding. Just kidding.
Two hours.
Two hours. Okay. So anyway, we're very happy to welcome them. We're very proud of their participation in this program. I believe they have quite a large class this year, 39 or 43, or a pretty good-sized group. So congratulations to each one of you. Give yourselves a pat on the back for being a part of this program that's very decisive in our community and helps keep us together, bring us together, cooperate and coordinate. So thanks very much for being here. Also, we have with us tonight Laura Beth Jackson-Payne. Laura Beth of Read to Succeed with a little talk, I think, about our one-book presentation tonight. So Laura Beth, if you would step to the microphone, we'd like to recognize you.
All right. Thank you so much for your time. I was trying to be real techie today and have all my notes in my phone. My battery just showed up and it was dying, so hopefully I won't slip on my notes here. But thank you for your time this evening. I am here tonight on behalf of Read to Succeed's One Book Committee. As we do each year, we choose a community read to bring the community together, to promote the importance of literacy through a shared reading experience. So this year's read, I'll hold it up for viewing tonight to see, is The Last Policeman. Through our survey last year, the readers of Rutherford County told us they wanted a mystery novel, so we have one for them. It's the first of a trilogy, and we're excited about it because of, one, we have, it's a little bit of a deviation from what we've done the last couple of years, which is the young adult novel, but this is a little more of a serious novel we think has a lot of importance for our community. But here's a scenario. An asteroid is hurtling towards Earth, and Earth is going to end within six months. But a young detective, Hank Palace, is continuing to fight for truth and justice along the way. Many worldwide and across the nation have decided to let morals and injustice go to the win, but there's one lone detective who thinks that truth and justice are worth preserving in the face even of disaster. So we're really excited about some of the issues this book brings up. I feel like it has a lot of really great points for discussion amongst readers, and we're looking forward to promoting it this year. We have some partners who are joining with us. They'll be announced actually later this month, so we're excited about that as well. But I have a copy here tonight, and so what we're hoping for your group is that one of you all will be able to take it, read it, share a comment on our Facebook page, the One Book Facebook page, and then continue to pass around and continue, as always, your support of literacy in Rutherford County. So who would like a book to read?
I'll read.
All right. Thank you so much, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Laura Beth. We appreciate Read to Succeed, and certainly this is a great program to have during the year, and many of us like those kinds of novels too. So thanks very much for bringing that and making that presentation.
It would produce. Big brain.
Yes. Don't color all of it. All right. Anything else from the council before we get to our consent agenda?
Mayor, real quickly, I think it would be good to point out that there were two council members that did the polar bear plunge this past Saturday, and there was a city manager that did not do the polar bear plunge that was going to do the polar bear plunge. So I would ask that Ms. Wright would put a line item on the city manager review that's coming up, that we can put that as...
Would that be positive review or negative review?
I would say...
Because I could give them a really big positive for not doing that.[367.02][367.02](Laughter)
As cold and flu season continues.
The water was 37 degrees, and that's why I have a cough drop in my mouth right now, so...
Mayor, one other thing before we get started. I know George Washington Elvis, and you were mentioning birthdays, so I think you had a birthday this week, and...
Yeah, yeah. Elvis called to wish me a happy birthday yesterday because he and I have shared birthdays for a long time.
Thank you. Happy birthday, and I'm glad you're still with us.
Thank you.[395.02][395.02](Laughter) I don't know where that one's going. Thank you very much, I think, Mr. Smotherman.
Keep it moving, Mayor.
Yes. Consent agenda. Council members, you have your consent agenda before you. You've had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding any of the items that are presented there? And if not, is there a motion that we accept the consent agenda as it is presented?
Move for approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Young, Mr. McFarland, thank you. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
You also have the minutes of the regular meeting held on December the 19th, 2013. If there are any additions or deletions to those minutes as they are presented now, it would be a good time to bring those up. If not, I'll accept a motion that we accept those minutes as they are presented.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Mr. Smotherman. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
We have a number of third readings tonight, so I'll try to get through those as quickly as possible. Consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to zone an area located along New Salem Highway and Veterans Parkway to Highway Commercial CH District, General Office OG District, and Residential Multi-Family 16, RM 16 District simultaneous with annexation, and to rezone an area located along Armstrong Valley Road to Highway Commercial CH District.
Move for approval on third read.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Mr. Smotherman, thank you. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Consider for passage again on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Medical Center Parkway east of Thompson Lane to mixed-use MU District.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Mr. Washington. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Medical Center Parkway west of Thompson Lane to mixed-use MU District.
Move for passage on third and final read.
Second.
Mr. Washington, Mr. Young, thank you. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
We'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to amend Appendix A zoning, Section 24, Article III, GDO Gateway Design Overlay District.
Move for passage.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. Ms. Harris, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
We'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Thompson Lane south of Medical Center Parkway to Gateway Design Overlay 1, GDO 1 District.
Move for passage.
Second.
Mr. Smotherman, Mr. McFarland, thank you. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
We'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Thompson Lane south of Medical Center Parkway to Gateway Design Overlay 1, GDO 1 District.
Move for passage.
Second.
Mr. Smotherman, Mr. McFarland, thank you. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
We'll consider now for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Robert Rose Drive and Thompson Lane to Gateway Design Overlay GDO 1 District.
Move for passage on third and final read.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Washington, Mr. Young. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
We'll now consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Medical Center Parkway as Gateway Design Overlay 1, GDO 1 District.
Move for passage on third and final read. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Washington, Mr. Young. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
We'll now consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Wilkinson Pike, east of Gresham Park, to Gateway Design Overlay 1, GDO 1 District.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Young, Mr. Smotherman, thank you. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
We'll now consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Medical Center Parkway as Gateway Design Overlay 1, GDO 1 District.
Move for passage.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Washington. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
We'll now consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code Chapter 22, Planning Commission, creating Section 22-15 designating the Planning Commission the city's design review commission.
Move for passage on third and final read.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Young, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
We'll now consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code Chapter 7, 11, 12, 15, 17, and 23 by adopting the 2012 International Building Code, the 2012 International Residential Code, the 2012 International Mechanical Code, the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code, ICCA 117.1-2009 Accessible and Usable Buildings and Facilities, 2008 National Electrical Code, the 2012 International Fire Code, the 2012 International Fuel Gas Code, the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code, the 2012 International Plumbing Code, the Standard Excavation and Grading Code, and certain proposed amendments to such codes and standards.
Move for passage on second read.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Mr. Young, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This, on second reading now, consider for passage on second reading an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code Chapter 7, 11, 12, 15, 17, and 23 by adopting the 2012 International Building Code, the 2012 International Residential Code, the 2012 International Mechanical Code, the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code, ICCA 117.1-2009 Accessible and Usable Buildings and Facilities, 2008 National Electrical Code, the 2012 International Fire Code, the 2012 International Fuel Gas Code, the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code, the 2012 International Plumbing Code, the Standard Excavation and Grading Code, and certain proposed amendments to such codes and standards.
Move for passage on second read.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Mr. Young, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to annex an area located along Manchester Highway and adopt for the same a plan of services.
Move for passage on second read.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Mr. Young, please call the roll.
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to annex an area located along New Salem Highway east of Veterans Parkway as Highway Commercial CH District simultaneous with annexation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland, Mr. Washington. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to annex an area located along Manchester Highway and adopt for the same a plan of services.
Move for passage on second read.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Washington, Mr. Smotherman. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to annex an area located along Manchester Highway and adopt for the same a plan of services.
Move for passage on second read.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Washington, Mr. Young. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to annex an area located along Manchester Highway and adopt for the same a plan of services.
Move for passage on second read.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Washington, Mr. Young. Please call the roll.
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to zone an area located along Manchester Highway as Highway Commercial CH District, Single Family Residential 8 RS 8 District, Single Family Residential 10 RS 10 District, Single Family Residential 12 RS 12 District, and Single Family Residential 15 RS 15 District simultaneous with annexation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland, Mr. Washington. Please call the roll.
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to zone an area located along Manchester Highway as Highway Commercial CH District, Single Family Residential 8 RS 8 District, Single Family Residential 10 RS 10 District, Single Family Residential 12 RS 12 District, and Single Family Residential 15 RS 15 District simultaneous with annexation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland, Mr. Washington. Please call the roll.
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to annex an area located along Salem Highway east of Veterans Parkway and to adopt for the same a plan of services.
Move for passage on second read.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Washington, Mr. Smotherman. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to annex an area located along New Salem Highway east of Veterans Parkway as Highway Commercial CH District simultaneous with annexation.
Move for passage on second read.
Second.
Mr. Young, Mr. Washington made the motion. Mr. Young, seconded. Please call the roll.
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Consider now for passage on second reading an ordinance to amend Murfreesboro City Code Chapter 4, Alcohol Sections 4-6 and 4-32 regarding alcohol sales and mixed-use MU District zoning.
So move. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Mr. Washington. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Consider now for passage on second reading an ordinance to amend Murfreesboro City Code Chapter 4, Alcohol Sections 4-6 and 4-32 regarding alcohol sales and mixed-use MU District zoning.
So move. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Mr. Washington. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Scales-Harris? Aye. Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Park and Recreation Commission with regards to bids for demolition work at Old Fort Park. Mr. Goodwin, welcome.
That gives you a little more information of where we are with the project.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
What about questions regarding this demolition bid?
My grandkids could have done it, but...
Is that in the form of a motion?
No, no, no.
Lanny, I know we're all excited about to get, ready to get the construction started, but before we start construction, we have to do the demolition and...
Yes, sir.
Were it not for the sake of MTSU and the city's tremendous cooperation and coordination that I know you've been involved with.
It's been a great partnership up to this point, and I think it's going to be a great partnership in the many years to come.
I would move for passage.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman, Ms. Harris, thank you. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. This time, consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board with regards to the City of Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund Financial Management Policies. Mr. Gore, you're welcome.
Mayor Bragg, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to come for you tonight. I think things have just moved a little too quick, so I'm going to try to slow it down just a tad here. That's just kidding. Five to seven minutes is my, is my, is my, my deal here. What we're trying to do, bringing these financial management policies before you tonight, is to basically formalize some practices we've had over, really starting in '07 when we had a financial conditions assessment, and we adopted, the board adopted, some of those recommendations. And as you recall, last summer, we did adopt the stormwater financial management policies. So, this is to dovetail with, with those two previous documents and basically align our current practices and just formalize those. So, I do, and one thing I do want to point out is these financial management policies should be considered fluid and easily modified. This should be a document that reflects the socioeconomic conditions of our city and should be easily adjusted if the policies need to be changed. So, these are nothing to be said in stone. But I do have about seven slides, eight slides of a PowerPoint I'd like to go through, just hitting the highlights. Basically, we're looking at reserve funding guidelines. This is how we currently operate. We've come up with some definitions and just look, we're looking at FY14, our budget reserves, and this is kind of the policy dashboard. But basically, we have the financial management policies set up to keep 12 months of operating expenses as a minimum balance operating reserves. These are secured reserves that basically have a constraint on them such that they are there for contingency issues such as if we lose a big customer, loss of revenue, or if we have a spike in expenses. So, this is to basically be kind of a backup reserve. We have working capital reserves, and we've broken that out into two designations, committed and unassigned. The committed component of those working capital reserves, we have 7.3 million currently committed on projects that basically we're using cash on hand, which offsets incurring debt. We have 11.4 million of unassigned working capital reserves that for future projects as designated or as assigned or committed. We do have a repair and replacement reserve. This is a $400,000, that's kind of hard to see, but that's assigned to the membranes at the water plant. It's basically a sinking fund. We want to start looking at those items that have a five to seven-year life and sink. We know we have to replace those items in five to seven years. We want to create a reserve to sink those funds in so that when the, the outlay, the cash outlay is required to pay for that, we have cash on hand. So, that's a quick summary. The, the operating reserves, again, are the minimum balance of 12 months. Well, that went backwards. Repair and replacement reserves is sinking fund, and the working capital reserves is also a sinking fund to defer debt. Some of the other policy highlights, real quick. We did, the council did adopt debt management policies for the Water and Sewer Fund back in December of 2011. There are several metrics that we are to, ratios that we are to abide by. I'm not going to go through those calculations, but we do, we have achieved meeting all of those, those metrics. And we do state in the policy that the repayment of debt shall be structured, structured in such a manner that the repayment period does not exceed the expected useful life of the asset. Cost of service and affordability, we do have some target affordability indexes, and that is basically to not exceed more than 4% of a very low income as defined by the HUD, the Housing and Urban Development. We will strive to meet cost of service principles. We actually have just completed an FY13 cost of service study. We will promote, we aren't doing this now, but we hope with our new customer information system, our utility billing software, that we will be able to create a customer assistance program. Some of you may be aware of the roundup that other utilities do, where if your, your bill is $51.16, that you can round that up to $52, and that 84 cents would go to a, a second or third-party administrator that would basically be able to help those that may be struggling financially. I think Middle Tennessee Electric does that, and we currently don't do that, but we, I think we want to look at that type of program. MWSD will attempt to provide timely, clear, and understandable information to our ratepayers. With regard to fund participation, this is something that we've adopted into our policies and procedures within the department, so this is really nothing new. This has been a longstanding practice. But developer improvements, which become part of the water and sewers system that are available for use and benefit of the, of the customers of the, of the sanitary sewer and water system, may be eligible to be reimbursed. The developer requesting that reimbursement would come before us and enter into a written agreement prior to commencement of construction. Basically, the portion that we see, would see as, as the department being able to participate in would be upsizing the line. If, if the development say only needed an eight-inch sanitary sewer line, but we knew that upstream or upland of that development, that there was more land that would be utilizing that infrastructure, and it needed a 10 or a 12 or a larger-sized sewer, we would pay for that upsizing. In, in that same scenario, if the depth was required to go greater than 12 feet deep, we would pay for any depth, extra depth that was beyond the 12-foot limit. But we would not consider, this is something that's been brought up a few times, policy says that the, the sewer is extended to the limits of the, or the boundary of the property. And that's kind of a, a pay-it-forward type, type deal, that all the developments receive that benefit because we require everyone to extend it to the limits. That would not be something we would consider to be a participating item with our, with our Water and Sewer Fund. That would just be a part of doing business. And it also states, we have, we have reserved the right to publicly bid improvements and require developers to provide surety deposits. Okay, last slide. This is just kind of an overall. It may be difficult, a little difficult to, to see, but a couple of weeks ago, you can see the yellow box. That was Trends and Strategic Planning Issues. That was emailed out to the council a couple of weeks ago. And what we've, we're attempting to do at this point is to have an annual review of our strategic planning issues that ultimately are the foundation upon which we know we need to look at our, our capital improvements program, our, our financial planning assumptions. That ultimately dovetails down into the annual budget. So, we want to be, we want to be strategically driven, understanding where we need to be in the next 10 to 15 years. At the far left, we do have the Murfreesboro Comprehensive Plan in the gray box that I know that the city is, city administration's working hard on, on getting that, that consultant to, to come forward, to, to select that consultant, to develop this plan. I see this as somewhat of a sister document with a Water Resources Integration Plan. This is how are we going to support the comprehensive plan by way of infrastructure for water, sewer, stormwater, reuse? How, how, how can we balance what we foresee as, as a sustainable growth, but also keeping that in an affordable price point? So, that, that is all I've got with regards to that. We would just ask for your approval. There's really no fiscal impact or costs associated with approving this plan. It's just formalizing our current practices.
Any questions for Mr. Gore regarding this recommendation? A motion to approve would be great.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Young, Ms. Harris, thank you. Any questions on the motion from the council? After. All right, thank you. Call the roll, Ms. Wright, please.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Mr. Young?
Mr. Gore?
Yes, sir.
With this terrible, terrible temperatures we have, inform the public and the council what you and the fire department have been doing the last 48 hours.
Well, I, thank you for asking that. I was going to put something out to the city administration and the council and the Water and Sewer Board. Kerry Taylor, our operations manager, have had the last three days, have gone to 24/7 shifts, taking our phone, taking our, our direct calls at the operation and maintenance facility. And we've had our crews basically housed out at the fire halls so that they would have quicker response time throughout the day as the leaks with our cold weather showed up. We've had probably, in the last three days, I would, I would venture to say 200 to 300 calls based on, that's just from our water and sewer side. That's not from the fire department side. They've dealt with a lot of sprinkler systems that have popped. I know that there's been some backflow preventers that maybe didn't make it out in the front of the properties. But basically, it was a great representation, or a great partnership over the last three days, working together between the water and sewer department and the fire department, understanding that when it gets this cold, it's really a unique thing. The, the pipes will freeze, and you won't know that they've popped because it's basically an ice plug in the line. And you really get hammered once it falls out. Once those ice, once that ice falls out in that line, and those cracks are obviously there, then you really see the, the leaks occur. So, it's been a cooperative effort, and I can't thank our guys at the Water and Sewer Department enough. They were playing heads-up.
Good. Thank you for that effort, and thank you, Mr. Young, for pointing that out. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Gore.
Thank you.
This time, we'll hear from the city attorney with regards to the process for changing the municipal election date. Ms. McKinnon?
Thank you, Mayor Bragg. At the council's last meeting, you voted to have the city pursue or request the election commission to pursue a referendum, changing the city's election date so it coincided with November general election in 2016. The research that I have done since that meeting, as outlined in my memo to you, indicates that the motion will be ineffective to achieve the desired result, and that additional steps are necessary. I had given you the state statutes and the excerpts from our charter that I believe are controlling. As you know, the General Assembly allowed cities to change their election date to coincide with the August or November general elections by adopting an ordinance. The motion that the council acted on was to send the, that question to the voters at the upcoming municipal election. I have prepared and put in the packet what I think is necessary to achieve that, to wit, a resolution from the council, Resolution 14R01, which makes specific reference to an ordinance which would make that change of switching it to the November general elections in 2016. But it is necessary for either a resolution or an ordinance to be adopted by the council in order that the election commission would put something on the ballot at your behest without going through the petition form, which had been started in which the council did not want to have, be the primary means upon which it could get to the ballot. Because any question that the council wants to put on the ballot has to, by resolution or ordinance, be given to the Rutherford County Election Commission 60 days, not less than 60 days, before the election date, which in the upcoming municipal elections will be April 15th of this year. It did not appear that there would necessarily be time to adopt an ordinance, and it wouldn't, on three readings, a resolution which could be effective at the meeting upon which it is adopted tonight or any subsequent meeting, that makes specific reference to the ordinance which is being put before the voters would be sufficient to do that. I should point out that it had been discussed at the council as being, let's see what the voters think about it, or words to that effect. My reading of Section 26 of the Charter, which you have in your packet, is that should the council, should this council, the 2014 pre-election council, vote to send it to the voters, and the voters vote yes, that the council should adopt it, that would be binding. It would not be an advisory feedback to the new post-municipal election council, but they would be obligated to do it. So, it's not just a, what do the voters think? It's, are we turning the decision from the council to the voters? Because the motion last time is not of legal effect to achieve the goal of putting it on the ballot, the council is not bound by the timing in terms of whether it would be November or the August election, and it's not bound by the timing in terms of whether or not the question gets put to the voters in the upcoming municipal election, the upcoming county general election, or the upcoming national November election. So, I have prepared and given to you the resolution which would achieve Councilman Smotherman's motion to put it, for the, switch to November elections, and put it on the April municipal election. But I felt I would be remiss if I didn't point out to you that you had other options. So, based on my research and some discussion with the state election officials, to achieve the goal that was announced, I believe the, the step would be to have you look at the ordinance and say, is this an ordinance that you want a yes or no vote on? If the ordinance is in the appropriate form, then to adopt the resolution at this meeting or a subsequent meeting, provided that it can be adopted and sent to the election commission 60 days before April 15th. I know it is legally convoluted, but that's, I think, the path forward to achieve the goal that had been identified, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. McKinnon?
If we adopt this resolution, is there enough time for our third readings and all this to make it to the, in this election, by April 15?
You wouldn't have three votes. What you would do is you would adopt the resolution, and the resolution says, dear county election commission, put on the ballot on April 15th, early voting starting March 26th, should the council of Murfreesboro adopt this ordinance? And if the vote in April is yes, the council should adopt this ordinance, then after the election, the council would be obligated to adopt the ordinance, and the three readings would take place after the election. And the three readings would, obviously, you know, plus the 15 days, there would be ample time to have that take effect before the 2016 elections. So, the process I've outlined for you, there's time for, because it would just take one reading of the resolution. But you can't look at only the resolution because the resolution says, send this specific ordinance issue to the voters. So, you need to be happy with the concepts and the language in the ordinance, even though you're not adopting it, because that's what you're saying we want the vote on. So, the only action, the only vote in the immediate future is a vote on the resolution. But you need to be comfortable with the concepts in the ordinance. Was that responsive?
So, in other words, by adopting it tonight and voting on it, we'll get the ball rolling for the election to move?
Yes, ma'am. You know, and as I say, what I've given you is just what was said, but you still, you still have options on both when the election, to decide the question would be, and what election cycle it would switch to in 2016. But you, you don't have to do anything, you don't have to change that decision, but you have the ability to change that decision if you wish to do so.
And Ms. McKinnon, I appreciate you clearing that up, because I'm sure I only made it more confusing with my motion. But if we adopt the resolution as it's presented, we would be adopting to have the election in April for the November change?
Yes.
What?
For November 2016, it would be...
Right, right, right.
You would be voting in April 2014 to say you won't have the next municipal election in April 2016. The next municipal election for the city council and the city school board would be in November 2016. And anybody whose term would otherwise be up in April 2016 would have their term extended to November 2016. But it would be, yes, that, that's what it would do.
And then the swearing-in date would be?
December 1st. Well, or at least the term, the term of office. I thought it would be appropriate to have that be clear. And so, if you see in the, the proposed ordinance, Section 2 specifies that the term of office would be until December 1st.
So, tonight, we could make the decision whether it would be August or November?
Right.
Is there a way to pose the question to the residents that they wanted to move the date either to August or November, and then the council, once we got something decided on that, that that's voted, that the council decides that, hey, that's, the residents want the date moved, that, that we then, we then discuss what advantages between August or November would be?
I don't think so, because you, when you, when the council sends an ordinance to be voted on, you know, the vote of the voters is at that particular ordinance. You could send two ordinances, one for an August time...
Right.
And one for a November time. But I don't, I'm not sure what we would do if both passed. Now, if both failed, or, you know, you would have the option still...
Right.
Of passing an ordinance based on, which got the highest number of votes or something like that. But I, I don't think you could send a, tell us, you know, what you think, sort of on the ordinance, because adopting, it's adopting a specific ordinance. That's why I did the text of the specific ordinance you'd be asking people to vote upon. And, you know, you could substitute August now, if you wanted to, for November, but I don't think you could say August or November.
And if we did it in August, it would be a September 1st swearing date, probably?
Yeah, that would be my suggestion, just for clarity, start, you know, first of the month, the month beginning after the election.
So, August would coincide with county general, and November would coincide with...
National.
National.
And having talked to several people this last week about this suggestion, the voters seemed to be quite excited about the concept of them getting to choose. The, there was some concern with November because of the national election of people I spoke with. And they were just concerned that the people who vote in the national election may only vote every four years, and that they may not be educated on the local issues, although I would sometimes question whether or not they're educated on the national issues either. But the, I mean, it does make logical sense that maybe it would be better to have it in August rather than have it in November. So, at, because it would coincide with more local elections, so it would be basically a local election and a national election. So, if, are there any more questions?
No, and my only question is also, if it passes, that means the ones that are up for reelection in 2016, they're, they will serve an additional five months regardless, or three or five months, right?
It would be the, the people who, whose term, the people who are not standing for election this year, who, who would, would ordinarily, their term would expire in April 2016, their term will continue. If their term would have ended in 2016, April, it will extend to August or November 2016. So, it's people who've already been elected, not anybody who would be coming up for election.
Right, I meant that.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't make that clear, yes.
It would be Mr. Washington, and Mr. Keely, and Mr. Smotherman.
Right. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear. You said what I was thinking.
Okay, good.
We're really talking the difference between extending three months and six months.
Yeah, and I, I should point out that the extension is not something that is up to us. It just happens one time, and the state law that allows this change to occur by ordinance as opposed to a private act of the General Assembly states specifically that you don't shorten anybody's time. You know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't allow the, the term of office to be truncated. So, that's why the extension is, is inherent in a change.
The only comments that I've heard are, most people who vote in city elections pretty much like to vote in city elections. They vote in other elections also, but they're very proud of their ability to vote in city elections. And frankly, with the nonpartisan basis of that election, they don't think the cost of separating it from not only the county's election, but from the state and the federal elections is excessive based on the expense every other year when you pay for it. So, I obviously haven't talked to the same people you've talked to, Mr. Smotherman, but the ones I've talked to really prefer to have the city election segregated. And I think possibly it's because they get to vote for three people in the election for the city, or they get a single shot if they want to. And it, you know, it gives our candidates time to talk about those issues that speak to the city. And I realize that when you have a well-run city, which you have not raised the taxes in 15 years, you have good parks and recreation, you have good public safety, you have an exceptional pension fund to take care of our employees that's fully funded, that you have, really have had a very good track record. Most of these folks that I've talked to really don't want to change the election because they feel like that may alter some policy decisions that may be made in the future, and they think that the track record our city has had under the current election in April has been exceptional, and they just really don't want to change it. So, you know, I understand that there's some interest, and certainly when you run for office, you've got to find issues. I think it's excellent that you can always point out, you could change the election, you could go to districts. There are a number of other issues that you could do to change our government to make it look like somebody else's. But I think we've been very successful as a community, and I think our elections and the way we have run our government's been very positive. And I think that's the fear that some would have, is by changing the election date, you get involved in national election issues or state issues which really don't concern us here in the City of Murfreesboro. So, I just add that, my preference would be if you were going to change it and you felt like that was the absolute thing you had to do, if you wouldn't leave it alone and leave it like it is, that I would prefer the August date and not the November date. leave it like it is, that I would prefer the August date and not the November date. That's just me.
And Mayor, to respond to that, I'm not sure that anybody I've talked to, certainly, were conscious of the expense of the election as well as the voters are, and the saving of the money is really not the intent, it's trying to increase voter participation. And last election, we had about seven, maybe eight percent of registered voters, which is almost sad to say, that of one hundred and fifteen thousand people and sixty-four thousand registered voters, that we had seven percent people who chose to come out and vote, and that was all we had. So if it does nothing more than increase the participation and make people feel more involved and more a part of our government, I certainly... That's my intent and what I'm trying to encourage. It's not all based on just trying to save the money. But having said that, I would move that we adopt the resolution as presented by our city's legal department, with the election to be held in August, or with the... August of 2016.
Second.
Mr. Washington.
I've been on this council for fifteen years, and I think this issue has come up every time that I've been here right before an election time, and that's a sign. I've gone on record to say I want to put this to bed, so, Mr. Smotherman, I appreciate you and your initiative, doing what you're doing, because I'm going to vote for the motion. But I think I'll be remiss if I tell the public, there's pros and cons to both situations. And the way this country has gotten so partisan, and the way that's going to... That plays into when you mix this election up with another one, you're going to get some of that. And I don't know if that's good for this city. Well, I know it's not good for this city. I just go on record saying that. It's not good for this city. But I am proud to put this to bed once and for all eventually, and let the citizens decide, you know, whether they want to make this change and how we operate or not. And I'm going to go on record also as saying, somewhere in the future, we need to address the other ban on the room, that's the district question. And I would go on record tonight, saying I want the public to be involved and decide that same issue, but we're going to change our formal government, because I don't want to see us... We've got some folk up here that don't want us to be like Washington, while I hope we don't get like DC. And that's my biggest fear. Go ahead.
Mayor?
Ms. McGannon.
I assume it was inherent, Mr. Smotherman, but I just want to be sure, the change to the ordinance that will change the November reference to August and the December reference to September were also part. It was to...
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
And also, you know, we do have a low voter turnout historically, that, you know, and you're right, it's too small. But on the other hand, you may have a lot of folks who just like it the way it is, you know, and they choose not to go vote, because, hey, don't rock the boat. So there's two sides looking at this thing now, and if you don't watch out, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, you know, I mean, you know, so I have some concerns about the future leadership of this city, and I just hope it doesn't go the way DC's going. That's all I've got to say.
So we have Mr. Smotherman's motion, and is there a second? Madeline, Ms. Harris, second it. I'll go on record that I'm going to vote in order to take this to the voters, because I think that's very important. But I will oppose changing the election date, and I would like voters to know that. I don't think this is a good idea to put us into a partisan election cycle, when we have a, by state law, a nonpartisan election. So that will be kind of what I will plan to do leading up to this election, is to work against changing the date. Mr. McFarlane.
Mayor, I think everyone has brought up good points, and I think when this came up after the last election, the last city election, this was brought up, and I think the one thing I went on record and still stand by, that there are certain decisions within our municipal government that are larger than six council members and a mayor, and I think this is one of those decisions, that there's no way that we can vote to move an election when, you know, you have people who are running at the same time election's going to be moved. So this is one of those issues that I have no concern putting it to the voters, and if the voters who are content with leaving the election the way it is, and we still have a low voter turnout, then, you know, it ends with the voters making the decision, and that's where we'll be on it. So I don't think that the citizens want us every time that there's some sort of controversial decision. They vote and elect us to lead, and we have to make those tough decisions. But again, there are certain tough decisions that go beyond what I feel like our jurisdiction is, and this is one of those. So look forward to seeing what the voter turnout is, and what the voters and the residents of Murfreesboro say the direction they want the election to go, and at the end of the day, it will be a decision that the... That's what we're up here to do, is what our constituents and residents say that they want.
And certainly playing off that, Shane, I would say that my intentions here are to increase voter turnout. It's not anything other than increase voter turnout, and if we have a tremendous turnout in April that votes it down, I'll be tickled to death. If they turn out and they vote in favor of changing it, I'll be tickled either way. But the one thing, Mr. Washington said something that he was concerned about the partisanship, and I understand what he's saying there, but the most important thing, I think, is to try and get more of the public involved with what we're doing and the decision-making process, and to remove any potential possibility of a special interest group or a smaller group of individuals to determine the outcome of the election because of such a small voter turnout. And that's my biggest concern with it, is I think that as long as we continue doing it the way we're doing it, that there will always be the potential of that happening. And so... And certainly, it's probably advantageous to us as council members to keep it in April. Low voter turnout probably works, as far as incumbents are concerned, to our advantage. But... Mayor Bratcher would question that.
Edwards and Bratcher, ma'am.
Yeah, Mr. Edwards and Bratcher. Yeah, but the... I guess if we do vote to change it, and we have a greater voter turnout, more people involved, I think that's wonderful. If the people choose to vote, no matter who they vote for, just because you're happy with the system... I don't encourage anybody to stay home and say, "I'm not going to vote because I'm happy with the system." I think that even council members don't mind getting a vote of encouragement for doing a good job if you feel like they are. And so don't stay home and not vote because you think everything's going okay with the city. Get involved and vote, one way or the other. It doesn't matter the outcome, but please get involved and vote.
All right. Any other comments or questions about this motion that's before us? Are you ready to vote? Shall we call the roll? Ms. Wright?
Ms. Kels Harris.
Yes.
Mr. McFarlane.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
All right, you have the beer permits, Ms. Wright?
We don't have any tonight.
No beer permits? Oh.
Billable.
All right, what about payment of statements? You have a list of statements to be considered for payment before you. Is there any questions regarding any of those bills, or is there a motion that we pay the bills?
Maybe that we pay the bills.
Sir?
Mr. McFarlane, Vice Mayor Washington, thank you. Please call the roll.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. I have no board and commission appointments to you, Mr. Lance. Other business from the staff or council to come before the council at this time? Read the last policeman, is that correct? All right, pass it around. Don't be sitting on it. Make it dog-eared and thumbed and ready to go probably in a couple of weeks, right? I know you don't have anything else to do. All right, anything else? If not, you're adjourned.